This regular board meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I just really wanted to extend a warm welcome to everyone here, to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just want to ask if you would please turn off your cell phones to silent if you have already done so, which I need to. And we just really appreciate the time that you've taken to join us here this evening and for all of your interest in Waco ISD. We do have someone signed up, audience for guest. We've had one person sign up to speak on one or more of the open meeting agenda items this evening, and the Board encourages comments about open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with Board procedures will do so in accordance with the law, Board policy, and Board rules. Board rules require that each speaker's comments pertain to an open meeting agenda item. Unless adjusted by the presiding officer, comments by each speaker will be no longer than three minutes per time limit per district's BED local. Please take note of the timer that is displayed. Mr. Davis will help coordinate that. And when one remains, you will hear a chime when the allocated time has expired, a buzzer will sound. Signed up today to speak is Mrs. Waits.
Good evening, Ms. Cordaby, trustees, and Dr. Kinkanen. My name is Mary Jane Waits, and I serve as the Regional Membership Specialist for the Association of Texas Professional Educators in Texas, right here in Region 12. On behalf of the nearly 350 ATPE members in Waco ISD, I express ATPE support for Consent Agenda Item Number 7I, which would provide a one-time $300 classroom supply allowance to teachers, dyslexia specialists, librarians, speech pathologists, and other positions to assist with the purchase of supplies for the 2023-24 school year. ATPE believes this is an excellent use of federal SR2 funds. Nearly every teacher uses significant amounts of their own personal funds to purchase classroom supplies, and this will help alleviate those costs for the next school year. We thank the Board Administration for their continued effort to support the employees of Waco ISD, and as always, ATPE is here to serve as a resource for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Waits. Now, we're going to take a moment of silence. Please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. And Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the Board members would meet me down in front of the dais, please.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Kinkanen. Each month, one campus likes two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the Regular Business Meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of March, Emily Solano and Imani Dowling from the Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy were selected for this honor. Emily is a junior at Waco High, and her favorite subject is math. She also plays soccer and loves to play volleyball, work with kids, and play with her dog. When Emily graduates, she wants to be a pediatrician. Thank you to Emily's mother, Maria Solano, for being here tonight and sharing your wonderful daughter with us. Imani is a senior at university, and her favorite subject is Clinical Certified Medical Assistant Class. She participates in CHEER, is the Student Council President, a Duncan Scholar, Health Occupation Students of America President, a member of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. Imani plans to attend Texas Tech and obtain a Bachelor's in Nursing and wants to work in labor and delivery when she graduates. Next, we are going to recognize our Future Chefs Culinary Competition winners. This past week, our Waco ISD Nutrition Services staff, under the guidance of Cliff Reese, Chef Julia Pennington, and Sarah Hotty, hosted the district's 12th Annual Future Chefs Culinary Competition. Students from across the district submitted recipes for an opportunity to prepare their dishes with the help of University High School culinary teachers and students. Once their food was prepared and plated, our student chefs presented small plates of their creations to a panel of judges along with friends and family members. Tonight, we are honoring the seven grand prize winners from this year's competition. Our first winner is Javen Evans for Health Conscious Foods Broccoli Salad from Alta Our next winner is Ms. Kinsley Laster for Simple Kid-Friendly Preparation Guaco-Chipo-Dipo Our next winner is Ms. Kalin Maldonado for Fun Kid Foods Taste the Rainbow Kabobs and Dip from Lake Air. Our next winner is Allison Rogie Best Table Presentation Galabacitas from Crestview. Zimena Romero for Best Fruit Side Dish Fruit Tacos from Kendrick. Enrique Adet Utan for Best Vegetable Side Dish Magic Noodles from South Waco. Congratulations to all of our grand prize winners. Take a group picture. The Heart of Texas Regional History Fair was held in February 16, 2023 at Baylor University. We have winners that include Gisette Carbijal, who won the following awards for the Chili Queens of San Antonio exhibit, the Dr. Pepper Museum Award, the Festival on the Brazos Award, the Waco Historical Commission Award, the McLennan County Historical Award, the Lynx Award, and the Texas Collection Award. For Individual Exhibit Category Honorable Mention, Zulie Barco won first place in the Paper category and won the WR POG Award with a historical paper entitled "Dorthea Lynn Dix: Reformer and Activist." Individuals Exhibit Category second place, Makaya Washington, Katherine Johnson for the Human Computer. Group Performance Category first place, Katerina Telip, Emma Clark Martinez, and Finley Ritter "Is There a Doctor in the House?", the Tale of Dr. Sarah Josephine Baker, and Typhoid Mary. For the Website Category first place, Evelyn Smith and Abigail Polk "Frontiers: The Then and Now of Activism." First and second place winners will be representing Waco ISD at the Texas History Day Contest held on April 15, 2023 at the University of Texas in Austin. Congratulations. Next, we have our Texas Association of Future Educators National Qualifiers. The intent of the Texas Association of the Future Educators is to gather students who are interested in becoming future educators and foster their passion. University High School Taffy students participated in the State Teach Tomorrow Conference in Round Rock, Texas. There were over 2,600 participants from throughout the state, and the following students have advanced to Nationals at the Educators Rising National Conference that will be held June 29 in Orlando, Florida. Madison Hudson and Jennifer Velasquez for Visualized Community Service Anchor Charts. Mia Ochoa in Alabama Sardinetta for Teacher-Created Materials High School C-Section. Zariai McLennan and Ariana Luna for Teacher-Created Materials Elementary Healthy Lungs. Jesus Delagarza for Teacher-Created Materials Elementary Flower Power Math. Isella Martinez and Naili Villa Cantavia Duffy Dotson for Inside Our Schools P-Tech Congratulations and good luck at Nationals. Our next group is the biggest group of the night, our Texas Incentive Allotment Designated Teachers. House Bill 3 established the Teacher Incentive Allotment, TIA, to recognize effective teachers on three different levels, recognize exemplary, and master. These teacher designations generate additional teacher-focused allotment funding to districts to reward their top performers. Districts will receive additional funding between $3,000 and $32,000 per year for each designated teacher they employ. At least 90% of the TIA funds must be used on teacher compensation on the campus where the designated teacher works. Waco ISD will give approximately $1.1 million in incentive pay in August 2023. To all the teachers who received TIA designation from the Texas Education Agency for the first and second year of participation. This is the second consecutive year that Waco ISD has validated teachers since the first data collection in the year 2020-2021, and the number of recognized teachers has more than doubled. There were 47 teachers validating in Spring 2022. Of those, five have moved up a level this round, and there are 59 newly designated teachers this second phase. This is a combined total of 99 Waco ISD TIA-designated teachers. So our TIA master-designated teachers are Allison Davis, Lake Air Montessori. Angela Lowe, Cedar Ridge. And Mary Middlebrook's Tinnison Middle. We're going to do a group picture with our master-designated teachers. Joy Bilyaut, Cedar Ridge. Jamie Cummings, Parkdale. Sarah Curtis, Dean Highland. Diamond Davila, Bells Hill. Kiri Emblem, University. Brent Fudge, Lake Air. Kristin Gozo, University. Amanda Guerrero, Kendrick. Mia Guillen, Crestview. Carly Lively, Tinnison. Amanda Martinez, Bells Hill. Danielle McCormick, Lake Air. Angela Mendez, West Avenue. Karen Reeves, Hillcrest. Alice Sauer, Lake Air. Colleen Skirlock, Dean Highland. Jennifer Takone, Bells Hill. Mary Tate, University. Amy Abel, Lake Air. Elizabeth Andrews, Crestview. Sherry Bagby, Mountain View. Latika Carmichael, Cedar Ridge. Elizabeth Karen, Dean Highland. Mark Cross, Lake Air. Jennifer Davidson, Mountain View. Jennifer DeVries, University. Kimberly Deo, Crestview. Penny Donnelly, Kendrick. Kathleen Eubanks, Bells Hill. Tiffany Fleming, Lake Air. Madeline Garth, Hillcrest. David Gibson, Lake Air. Frances Henderson, Parkdale. Tamara Hawley, Hillcrest. Kimberly Huffman, Cedar Ridge. Stephanie Yano, Cedar Ridge. Sandra Maxwell, Dean Highland. Ryan McCrady, Lake Air. Kelly Maya, Hillcrest. Jamie Ochoa, Hillcrest. Ines Olveda, Hillcrest. Kayla Overby, Lake Air. Christy Parker, West Avenue. Nellie Perez, Providence Heights. Alice Petrich, Bells Hill. Sherry Prather, Tinnison. Telly Ramsey, University. Ruby Ruiz, Crestview. Kimberly Saez, Cedar Ridge. Jonathan Scott, Crestview. Kirsten Schaffer, Lake Air. Karina Vasquez, Cedar Ridge. Beatriz Vila Nueva, Cedar Ridge. Karen Workman, Mountain View. And Tiffany Yoder, Tinnison. So if we can have our exemplary-designated teachers come for a group picture, and then we'll follow that by doing a recognized. In the back? Okay. Okay, yeah, let's do some in the back and some in the front. Yeah, do you want to jam all? Yeah, do exemplary. Next, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme for the 2022-2023 School Year Lead From the Heart and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In March, the district is recognizing communities and schools. Here to receive the award for communities and schools are Chief Executive Officer Erin Meis, Chief Impact Officer Tony Shelton, Chief Program Officer Kaylee Eggers, and Communities and Schools University High School Site Coordinator Elisa Garcia. Communities and Schools provides evidence-based student success programming, including case management, academic behavior, and attendance intervention, tutoring, mentoring, basic needs assistance. needs assistance, parent and guardian support, youth workforce development, programming, and community development activities. These services take place in 11 Waco ISD schools, including Alta Vista, Brazos, Brook Avenue, Carver Indian Springs, Caesar Chavez, J.H. Heinz, Kendrick, Providence Heights, Tennyson, University High, and Waco High. They have 15 full-time CIS site coordinators and case managers on Waco ISD campuses each day. To date, in 2022-2023 school year, over 1,900 Waco ISD students are receiving services, case management services, with over 28,000 hours of services having been provided to Waco ISD students. Recently, CIS donated clear backpacks to Waco High School students. Thank you so much for everything that you do. That concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
That was fun. And to continue in the theme of celebration, often we don't see all the work that she puts behind the scene, but Ms. Monica Boy today is her birthday, so I wanted to say happy birthday to her. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, Dr. Kincanon Superintendent's report.
All right, well, that was tough to follow. I want to add a little bit to those recognitions and say thank you to Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. Hosek, who lead, have led our TIA initiative and have done really tedious work to make that possible. I also want to point out that those are five-year, I think, that Alice said that those are five-year monetary awards, and they have different values based on the level that you earn and the school that you're in, based on socioeconomic status percentages of the school. But some of those are, I would say, 20, what's the highest one? We have Dr. Gutierrez, $20,000 a year for five years. Some of those were $100,000 awards. Yes? 27 is the, was the highest this year, so those are significant. So they get them not one year, but they get them five years in a row. So that was a really big deal, and it was fun to see all of our teachers here celebrating that with their administrators. I have a few items this evening, and I'll start with the Superintendent Scholars. And it, this started our month off in March, and I, this is my favorite, one of my favorite events of the year. We honored our 9th, 10th, and 11th grade Superintendent Scholars at the Lee Lockwood Library and Museum. And the goal of the event is to celebrate the students as being our top performers on the PSAT. But also, there's a sneaky little goal to challenge them to keep working and to make the most of their opportunities. This is a program that I started, and it's because I know that we have some of the brightest students anywhere, and I want those students to have as many doors opened for them as possible for college admissions and scholarships and access to special programs within the universities. And we're just so excited to get to honor them. So it honors both what they've accomplished already, and then I think it really demonstrates how much the district is supporting, is supporting these students to continue to pursue their educational goals. So we provide additional tutoring for these students on the PSAT so that they can do the best that they can, especially in the 11th grade where they take the National Merit Qualifying Exam. So we had 52 students honored this year. 15 were Gold Scholars, who, those students scored in the top 5% nationally. 21 were Silver Scholars, achieving in the top 10%, and 16 were Bronze Scholars, whose scores were in the top 15%. I want to thank Celeste Sodgren, Paula Miller, and the entire Advanced Academics team for such a wonderful event. It was pretty perfect, I thought. And then we look forward to celebrating our 8th grade scholars at their ceremony coming up on April the 20th. Last week ended on a high note with more than 200 students and many members of our staff and community who enjoyed another successful year of our Men's and Women's Empowerment Summits. Students attended breakout sessions, they heard from motivational keynote speakers, and they had the opportunity to engage with district and community leaders. So many thanks to MCC, Texas, TSTC, the Junior League of Waco, our keynote speakers Derrick Johnson and Rocky Howard, and the many community partners and volunteers who provided this incredible experience for our students. And I'd also like to thank those of you who were able to attend and take part in leading these events, we appreciate you. And I would also like to thank our Executive Director of Student Support, Yolanda Williams, for her coordination of these events every year, she does a beautiful job. You wouldn't want to say anything about their experience, most of you were there, were able to attend.
I will, it was a great event. I would like to send a shout-out to Mr. Quavis Peacock, he did a great job with the Men's Empowerment Summit again this year, Ms. Yolanda Williams, and everyone else who participated in making it a great event. Talked to kids since, and it was a very impactful summit for them, they learned a lot, and they're motivated for their future. So thank you guys for all your hard work.
I get to sit with a really good group of kids from, from Carver, and as usual, they had more to teach me than I did them, but they were just really fun. I had told them that we should do lunch again, and they've already contacted me. Contact their principal to bring them some food sometime next week, so.
It was so wonderful to have the students there, but I also really appreciated the number of community members who gave up a couple of hours of their afternoon to serve as a table host and facilitated conversations with the students and to show the, how many of the community members were willing to come do that for our students, I really appreciated them as well.
I sat with a table of university freshman boys, and I was just really touched and impressed at how bright and sharp each of them were, but then also how they, I don't think they all hung in the same circle at university, but you could tell that they all cared for each other in a way that was really helpful. One of the things that was planned, I don't know if it was Quavis or who it was, but there were ties for every child and every youth and every adult that were there, and part of the time was spent teaching them how to tie ties. And that's brilliant. I have a, I have a 17-year-old who learned at the event how to tie a tie, because I've always tied his ties. So thank you for all y'all did, it was very impactful.
I just have to say, some girls got some pearls. I don't know how that happened, but that was pretty awesome, too. Do you want to?
Just want to say thank you to it, it's a great event, same thing with Jonathan, just love talking to the kids.
Great, thank y'all. You may have seen Campus Teachers of the Year, you may have been seeing some of the announcements from our campuses on social media. There are 25 teachers from the district who've been named a Teacher of the Year. Together, those teachers have a combined total of 249 years of service in education, with 193 years of serving the students and families and community of Waco ISD. So we look forward to honoring those teachers, and I would ask that you join me in thanking them for how they're leading from their hearts and, and taking care of our kids. We do have an event planned for May the 23rd, where we will announce all of the district's Outstanding Teachers of the Year for both elementary and secondary, and that will be held at the Texas Sports Hall of Fame in Waco, and I believe that's already on your calendar. Next item is Dave Campbell's Top 10 Fastest Rising Texas High School Football Head Coaches. And what an incredible season again that our University High School football team had. And because of that, Dave Campbell's Texas Football published its list of the top 10 fastest rising Texas High School Football Head Coaches entering 2023, which included one of our very own, Coach Kent Laster was featured in this noteworthy list, and descri, and the article described our University Trojans as one of the real feel-good stories in the state, posting a 6-6 record and a bi-district playoff win in 2022. So congratulations again to Coach Laster and all the players and staff. And I, for me, between watching University High School and then all of those great Waco High School videos that are coming out by Coach help, I'm getting really excited for football again in the fall, and it will, it'll be here before we know it, 2023 season is coming. Next item you heard about already from our guest speaker, Ms. Waits, and as she said, teachers spend money on their own classrooms. In fact, national statistics show that well over 90% of teachers spend their own money on school supplies and other items for their students as they prepare their classrooms for the beginning of the school year. Also, new teachers come to us, and they have limited funds, they haven't gotten their first paycheck yet, and they don't have many materials to customize their classrooms and create the kind of environments that they desire for their students. So as a part of tonight's consent agenda, the board has the opportunity to support our teachers through a request to provide a one-time $300 back-to-school classroom supply allowance that will come in the August 31st, 2023 paycheck for teachers, master teachers, dyslexia specialists, librarians, library media specialists, speech pathologists, assistant speech pathologists, and reading recovery leads, basically anyone who sets up a classroom as a teacher, to assist with the purchase of supplies and materials for their classrooms for the start of the 23-24 school year. And that is an additional measure to invest in our employee and teacher welfare, and we believe that not only benefits our teachers, but supports their efforts to start the new school year strong for their students. And so I wanted to preempt that a little bit, and that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you, lots of good stuff, and a lot of stuff happening in the district. We'll move on to information items and reports, does anyone have any questions? 6A, 6B, 6C. Okay, I will move to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. Does anyone want anything pulled off of seven? Okay, hearing nothing, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vidonya, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory, or is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And with that, I wanted to say welcome to Jeremy Arden and to Darius Brown. I'm excited to have them back in Waco ISD. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, review and discuss Communications Department update. We've already been speaking a lot, communicating a lot, we've got more.
The Communications Department places a focus, here, let me click to the next slide there, on customer service, community engagement, building trust and relationships, and being transparent. In addition to all of our current accomplishments, I have something really exciting to share with you all about community engagement as we move through the presentation. So we maintain a focus on what's important in all that we do. You may not know some of the items that fall under our purview, but you're going to find out tonight. Creative services are some of the more visible functions that we perform. And as you can see, video productions alone, it's one of our more engaging types of rich media. In 2022, we did 134 video productions, and that included videos for board meetings, musical performances, classroom close-ups, special events, and other various types of events. Another one of our forward-facing items that we do is photography, and thankfully, we have a really talented group of team members who like to get out and see what our kids are up to and take photos. I'm sure you've seen them all out in action at many of our events. In 2022, we photographed 136 events or programs and took 52 sitting portraits, and we also started a Flickr account so that we could share these photos with our families and our staff, and they can download them and use them as they wish. You can find the account by going to wacoisd.org相photos. Another thing that we do that you see a lot is the graphic design and art. It might sound unbelievable, but in 2022, we created at least 245 graphics, and that's going to include anything from invitations to programs to social media graphics and more. These are just a few examples of what the team has created. Consistent branding is also essential to improving and maintaining our image and reputation, and this is going to be at front and center in our new campuses to ensure that they have a clean and consistent brand identity. And what you see on the screen are two examples of branding sheets that we have created for GW Carver and for Tennyson Middle School. Not to worry, though, this work is going to continue in our existing campuses as well. So we will branch this work out into the campuses that we already have, and that will work its way into coming together for a complete Waco ISD branding guide. I personally handle media relations and have worked to build our relationships with our local media. We pushed out about 70 press releases in 2022 and fielded plenty more media inquiries. So we found that maintaining healthy relationships with our media has helped us share all of the amazing things that we have happening in the district and on our campuses. Community engagement is also a priority for the Communications Department. And one way that we do that is through our mass, use of mass communication. So mass communication goes out to the community in the form of emails, text messages, and call-outs. And this fall, we moved from primarily using call-outs just for those important action items, so using call-outs for things when we need people to actually do something, if you think crisis communication. And we, we've moved from using so many call-outs to doing more emails and text messages. We've also been spending time educating our public on making sure that their information is up to date with the district so that whenever we do need to push something out, they will receive the information as it goes out. And the messages do go out to our community in the language of their choice, so they have an option to choose which language they're going to receive that messaging in. Newsletters is another way that we communicate with our internal and external community, and the Communications Department compiles the administrator and the community newsletters, and in 2022, we completed 54 newsletters. So there have been several updates to our internal processes and implementation of various communications tools. In November of 2021, you might have noticed the board meeting recap videos that we started implementing in lieu of the long-form write-up recap, and we think that that has proven effective because we saw an increase in the total views of the full board meeting videos. So they increased in 2022 by 1,357 views. Soon after arriving at Waco ISD, I did create and implement a district social media guidelines for use across all social media platforms, and they included changes in the frequency of post guidelines for responding to comments, and provided best practices for our social media administrators. And a fun fact that you might not know is Waco ISD has about 157 social media accounts, so it's a lot to keep track of. In 2022, for the main district accounts, we had an increase of Facebook followers by 1,058, an increase of Instagram followers by 454, and an increase of Twitter followers by 200, for a total increase of 1712 new followers. by 200, for a total increase of 1712 new followers. And that's going to be on the main Waco ISD district accounts. We also instituted a new marketing calendar so that we don't miss anything important. And we also started a social media planner. So we plan those, a lot of the posts ahead of time. We're able to make sure that we are covering things for various campuses, various events, and things happening throughout the district. In 2022, we made 557 Facebook posts, 489 Instagram posts, and 562 Twitter posts on our main pages. And now for the exciting part. We do value truly our community, and we want to ensure that we're serving them to the best of our ability. So we've partnered with K-12 Insight to engage our community about their perceptions of the communication that they receive from Waco ISD. And part of that process is going to include an anonymous survey followed by focus groups. So we're going to be asking questions about how they currently receive the communication, to rate us on how they feel the communication is, tell us how you would prefer to receive the communication, so that we're making sure that we're serving our community where they are. We'll be able to look at the information as a whole, and then we can break it down by campus, if they tell us which campus that they work at and/or have children attending, so that we can help our campuses also kind of zone in on the better tools that they can use to serve their community. We have started work on this, and we are on track to launch our survey by April 1st. We are going to use that information we receive back from the community to inform our communications plan for the entire district. So people will be able to see something back from the information that they're sharing with us. Another exciting thing that we are happy to share with you is our 2021 Bond project website. You can access the site by going to wacoisd.org相2021bond. And if you click on any of the projects, it'll open to the page, and you can see various things on that page related to that specific project, such as planning documents, design presentations, and other important documentation. There's also a blog on the side that is updated regularly to tell you where we are in the construction process, and that will include photos and/or videos, along with photos of various events related to that specific project. So the communications department is also instrumental in supporting district events. We coordinate events such as groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, grand openings, back-to-school huddles, and our own Stephanie Hines leads the charge on the HBE Celebrity Chef Cook-Off event. But we also support various events, too many for me to count, with photos, videos, planning, media coverage, and marketing. We also offer other services and support for the district. So that's going to include public information and records. Margarita Ramirez is our records guru, and as you can see, she stays really busy processing requests. She spearheaded our move from paper request to going fully online for requests in August 2021, which has made the process more efficient. The new service pays for itself, and we've collected revenue from 2021 to 22 in the amount of $18,145 versus the school year before was $1,012. And so that is allowing us to be more efficient in providing those records in a more timely manner to our community. Somehow, she also finds time to scan in transcripts. So she scanned in 865 class transcripts for 2022. Internal training and support is another major function that we do. So we trained the university and Waco High audiovisual staff to assist in creation of the Waco ISD sports media program. So if you went to any of the football games, you saw that our students are now doing the recording, and that gives them hands-on education and helps prepare them to step into a job when they leave school. We train 39 staff members on website content creation and maintenance. We provide records management training three times a year, and we assist campuses and departments in organizing, boxing, labeling, and purging their records to maintain compliance with Waco ISD records retention and destruction policy. Community partnerships also falls under our umbrella. So adopt a school is a big part of that. It's been in place for approximately 37 years. And there are four categories that fall under the adopt a school. So it's the adult student connections, incentive and motivation, workforce development, and community service. And we do give out awards, 10 awards per year, to some of our community partners, thanking them for adopting a school and offering those services that are specific to that campus needs. Our community contributions from February 2022 to date are a value of $201,195, has been donated to Waco ISD via a combination of monetary donations, goods, and services. And Stephanie Hines also tracks that, the monetary and our service donations as well. So hold tight, there's more. We're also the hub of business in, business out for Waco ISD. Our amazing district receptionist and executive administrative assistant processed 6,729 pieces of mail, received 2,400 and recorded 2,400 packages, processed 6,600 guests, and answered approximately 150 calls per day, if not more. So anytime you come to the district and you come in downstairs, Tiana, who's down there now, she works for our department as well. Miscellaneous services. I know there's still more. It's crazy. We do special recognitions. So we did in 2022, 324 special recognitions, 106 notarizations, 698 facility reservation approvals, 13 board presentations, 53 flyer approvals, and 67 business cards ordered. So I really do have the best crew around, and I'm proud to share with you all that last month we were recognized at the Texas School Public Relations Association, that conference that was held in Fort Worth with two best-in-class awards, 10 gold and two silver, in the categories shown here. So it's just a testament to the hard work that we do. We don't just do our job, but we try really hard to do it well. We also try to have a little fun along the way. So those are just a couple of silly pictures of us. Does anyone have any questions?
I really appreciate you presenting this information to us. It was of interest of mine to get an update on all the work that you have done since you joined the district. And for so many of our families, their teachers are obviously their first point of contact. But I know that all of these other areas that you just detailed to us, that families are also getting information that way. And so I love that our district is being so intentional about having that communication, especially in dual language. So thank you so much for being the face of our district, and so much of what our families know about Waco ISD comes from things that your department is doing. So we really appreciate that.
Question. One, is it possible to get a picture of Jessie in that cow suit?
I think we can make that happen.
And my second one, so the individual programs, do they have the ability to update their own social media, or do they have to go through the administration building?
No. So campuses and individual program pages do update their own social media, which was why it was so important to put guidelines in place so that we are being consistent across all platforms. And just to help, right? Because a lot of times, people doing those jobs on campuses and in programs, that's an additional duty for them. So helping to provide best practices and kind of guide them a little bit is really helpful.
No, I think that's great. Our old program, we kind of had to bend the rules a little bit because we had to get information out to the community and our students, and it was really difficult to try and submit what we wanted and then wait for it to get done. So this is great. Thank you.
I've been guilty at times of asking someone working with me, can you do this? And then, can you do this? And can you add this? And often, the response is, when? You expect me to do all these things? And it seems like this is a result of lots and lots of folks either realizing that we have so many needs that are so very important, but a great response of how you shore that up with a structure that gets it done. Because it's really easy just to think of these things just happening, right? But that's a lot of work. Man, that's a lot of work, and it's a lot of time, and it's often tedious. But thank you, because it's overwhelming to see all that your office does, and there's not that many hands in it. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I want to echo kind of what people here have said, and I don't think I realized the scope of what you guys are doing. And so I just really wanted to thank you so much for all of that. I was also looking at the Tassborough Awards, and I was noticing how many videos, and I thought, Jessie, way to go, Jessie Pateo. I thought, he's been doing this a long time, and he's honed his craft. So it's just, it's great to see. Yeah, and then Mary Center, I'm more than sure with all her geographers. I'm just so, so proud of Waco ISD and all the structures that you guys have put in place and moving forward. I'm really excited about the K-12 survey. I think that's so important. I mean, so many times, I want to hear from parents, and I feel like I have to like go hunt them down to really kind of hear. So I just, do you know how, could I ask some more questions about that specifically? Do you know how, or do you have a plan as to how you're really going to push out that survey?
So it is completely third-party. So K-12 is handling it. They see all the responses. We don't. It's anonymous, because we want to give people the opportunity to be as honest with us as they can. But we're going to help with advertising. So they're going to send out emails and text messages, but we're going to blast it on social media. I'll do a press release. We'll print rat cards and hand them out at various events. I really, it's going to run for three weeks, so I want to give not just parents, but community members a chance. Anybody who wants to participate, I want to hear from them.
No, that's great. And is it going to also be in Spanish?
It's going to be in English and Spanish, yes.
Perfect. That's great. You guys are doing a lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number nine, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the rankings of contracts for construction manager at risk for replacement of Kendrick Elementary School and addition and renovations to South Waco Elementary School. Ms. Padetta.
Good evening, Dr. Kincanon, President Courteig, members of the board. So we have a combined agenda item in front of us this evening, and it signifies another significant milestone in the implementation of the 2021 bond. With your approval, this item will secure the two construction managers at risk, one for Kendrick and one for South Waco Elementary School, the remaining two projects in our bond. So we can start with Kendrick Elementary School. Built Right Education Group is the number-one ranked firm. Built Right Education Group has a successful experience in a local school district, completing a new elementary school in 12 months and in budget. This was in China Springs, in a very compressed schedule. They were under the gun, and they needed it, and they really got it done for them. So this kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? This kind of determination to make things happen will be very beneficial to Waco ISD. You might have noticed, when you looked through the backup, that Built Right Education Group reduced their general conditions percentage a little bit. And I want to tell you what that was about. When we issued the RFQ, we anticipated that the Kendrick Elementary School would be built on the same site as the existing school while school was in operation. And as we worked through that, we just decided, the group, the project executive committee, the campuses decided we were very concerned about doing that. So I know Dr. Kincanon visited with the board about it, and we got approval to go ahead and demo the school and redesign and put a building on there that can really maximize the use of the site. So that changed the duration of the project. And in the RFP, the second step of the selection process, they had been asked to provide a general conditions fee for an 18-month project. Well, now it's a 15-month project. So we asked them to take a look at it and see what they could do, because it's shorter timeframe, and so they reduced their general conditions fee for a little bit. So that's why that changed. For South Waco, Mazonic Construction is the number-one ranked firm. Mazonic has a long and successful history in central Texas and has also done a lot of work for Waco ISD. The evaluation committee was very impressed with the presentation Mazonic gave, and especially their detailed and thorough approach to the South Waco renovation and addition. That one, at this time, we anticipate will be done while the school is occupied. And so it's very important. We have a contractor that's very experienced in working in that kind of environment. And so that's what we're bringing to you today.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the rankings of the construction management at risk for each of the two identified projects.
Okay. We have a, first by Mr. Vidonya. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Okay, so the motion for the administration recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the rankings of the construction managers at risk for each of the two identified projects, the replacement of Kendrick Elementary School and the addition renovations of South Waco Elementary School, and authorize a superintendent to execute the contract as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Are there any questions?
Last I had heard, we were talking about the demolition and how that would make it so much easier for the school. And our one concern was how it would be for the administration at the school, for the parents, and for the students. I'd love for us just to hear briefly the response to that, and if that's a good thing, how we will go about, not the details, but I just want to feel good that our leadership there feels good about this decision.
Well, our leadership is here.
Come on, Mrs. Lozano.
She can speak. I'll start, and then Mrs. Lozano can say whatever she would like about that. We visited with Mrs. Lozano, principal of Kendrick Elementary, about this because there were some challenges with the site, and we couldn't get the best design by building a school right next to one and then tearing the existing campus down. And then we were going to lose parking places because of just limited space on the site. And so we were extremely worried, and this is challenge, right? To move an entire campus to another building during construction. So we visited with her. She has some recollection of doing that in the past for some prior projects in Waco ISD, and she said she would help us work through that with her parents. Now, we have some work to do. We'll have some logistical things to figure out in terms of transportation for kids. But Mrs. Lozano is the key to making it work. So do you want to say something?
So I was actually the one that came up with the suggestion. I said, why don't we try to relocate somewhere else? Because I don't, as it is, we don't have any parking. According to the design, we weren't even going to have a backfield where the kids were going to be playing. As it is, we have barracks. It's just, it's just not a good situation. And so I was for it, because when the new Bells Hills and University High School and Caesar Chavez were being built, we had to relocate. And as a parent, I never even questioned it. I just went ahead. I said, okay, it's the best for our community. And so I've shared it with our teachers, our staff, and they're okay with it. They're okay with it. It'll be a little adjustment, but we'll have, we'll all be in one place, because right now, we have several barracks. They don't have running water, have to come in when it's cold, and no restrooms. And so we're just excited that we're going to be together. And it's just going to be a year and a half. So, and we're going to have a beautiful school. I'm just so excited for that. So, yes.
Yeah, I think we've discussed it, and I think, you know, the consensus we came to was if you're happy with it, we're happy with it.
Yes, yes.
You've got a really good feel and connection with your parents and students and teachers. So I know there's going to be some bumps in the road, but you let us know what you need.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to affirm the decision. My wife's office is in the shadow of the new Baylor Basketball Pavilion, and they're not even doing work on her office, and it's a nightmare for her office. They've lost half their parking. They lose the water every other day. And so we might have been able to tough it out, but I'm grateful that you were... And so, we might have been able to tough it out, but I'm grateful that, that you were willing and able to take this on. I think it will be a much more successful year for the students and teachers and families.
Yes, definitely. We want the best for our community, our parents, and our students.
I just want to say thank you for having the relationship with your parents and students well enough and teachers to know that this would be the best move, and that people would come behind, and if you ever need any assistance or help along the way, please know that we're behind you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano. Are you ready to take a vote? Great. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Padetta. Next up, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding a resolution to waive penalty and interest on certain delinquent property taxes. Ms. Davis.
So, as I'm sure you are all aware by now, on January 31st, which is the last day for the tax office to collect taxes without penalty or interest, the county judge, due to inclement weather, closed the tax off, closed the county courthouse, which closed the tax office. So as a result, those taxpayers who were, wait till the last day to pay their taxes, were not able to get in to pay taxes. Additionally, there were a, a number of disruptions in mail service that caused delinquencies. So, we do have, under Texas Property Tax Code, the ability to waive those penalties and interest. So you have in your packet a resolution that will give the tax collector, Randy Riggs, the discretion to decide on which ones of those that he feels would have been timely had they not closed the tax office, and to waive those penalties and interest. I have said in the agenda item that I don't feel that there's a financial impact to the district, because frankly, had the tax office been open, we would not be collecting penalties and interest on those taxes anyway. So, we're recommending that the board approve the resolution to waive those penalties and interest, and give Mr. Riggs the ability to, at his discretion, waive those.
I will entertain a motion for the administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the attached resolution waiving the penalties and interest on certain delinquent property taxes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, it passes unanimously. Ms. Davis, thank you so much for doing this. I know with the market and the recession, times are tight and inclement weather, and I, I just think this is, this is the right thing to do. And so thank you for, for bringing that forward. I appreciate it. Okay, item 11, you're up again. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action, do I have to read this whole thing? Regarding an order authorizing the issuance from time to time to Waco Independent School District Unlimited Tax Building Bonds in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed $80 million, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, providing for an award sale thereof in accordance with specified parameters, authorizing the execution, delivery of one or more purchased contracts, and paying, I'm not going to read all of that. I didn't even finish, I still had a couple more lines, so.
In case you don't know, an attorney did write. So, we are getting ready to, are getting, asking for you all to give us the authority to issue, when the market looks right, the remaining $80 million from the 2021 bond election. We do have here, Rob Collins, who is our bond counsel, and he can discuss the order with you. And then we also have, I didn't put Dusty Trailer in the agenda item, because I wasn't sure he's going to be here, be able to be here, but he is here tonight to talk to you, and you can ask any questions you might have about market conditions and all of that, so.
Great.
Dusty's put me forward, although I know you want to hear from him primarily on, on the market rates that we, you'll be looking at. But this is the final piece from your 2021 bonds. It's been, you know, pretty quick, and the rates have been favorable. Hopefully, you know, they cooperate this time as well. But as soon as, if you approve, the board approves this tonight, you'll authorize Ms. Davis and Ms. Dr. Kincanon to approve the sale of the bonds, when the timing's right, as long as it meets the parameters that are in the ordinance, which is not to exceed $80 million, the final, from the election, the interest rate, and then the bonds can't mature later than 2054. So that is in keeping with the same parameters you've used on the prior two issues, I think it was, from the, from the 2021 election. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know you want to hear from Dusty. But thank you for putting me on.
No, thank you.
I would just kind of echo Rob's, Rob's sentiment. This is the last and final, we anticipate this being the last and final tranche of the November 2021 bond election amount. We've already gone to the market twice, and so this is the fini, final $80 million of those bonds authorized. You know, we were looking to do this at some point in 2023. At the end of 2022, we ran into a little bit of a hurdle, in that the permanent school fund guarantee of Texas was running out of capacity. So we went ahead and filed for authorization for the remaining authorization, the remainder of the authorization to receive the state's permanent school fund guarantee, to be able to stamp the bonds with the state's AAA rating. We were able to get that. A number of school districts that didn't yet have bonds authorized, or weren't quite sure of their plans, or didn't want to pay the $1,500 filing fee, missed out on the boat. Right now, Waco ISD has the permanent school fund guarantee, and we have that guarantee in place right now until the latter part of May. So we're moving towards trying to go ahead and get these bonds into the market. Now, since then, the states kind of come in and said, hey, they're going to start shoring up and allowing some folks to get back into the permanent school fund business. But you've got that, and I think it's appropriate, given market conditions, for us to take advantage of being able to sell these when we know we've got the permanent school fund guarantee at hand. I figured that there are a fair amount of questions that may be out there as it relates to everything that we've all been paying attention to in the news over the past two to three weeks, this banking, this banking crisis. And, and what I would say about that is, when, when Waco ISD goes to the market, Waco ISD goes into the market with something that investors believe to be a very safe investment, you're going to the market with unlimited tax school building bonds that are guaranteed by the full faith and credit of Waco ISD, so you have a solid bond rating on your own, plus the permanent school fund guarantee. And what we have seen in this banking crisis is that investors have been moving money to safe investments. So, interest rates on bonds over the course of the past two to three weeks have really fallen. I know that, that, for a lot of us, that's counterintuitive, but they have fallen from where they were, say, the beginning of, middle of February. So, you know, we're in a position, hopefully get, get the rating in place, and get out in the market in the next three weeks or so, and be able to lock in a favorable interest rate on the remainder of these bonds. Now, so, that being said, now if we were in the market today, we would probably be in an interest rate environment somewhere in the low 4% range. Okay.
Can you remind us of what our previous two sales were?
Absolutely. And the, the biggest piece of that was the first tranche. We sold that prior to the beginning of the rate hikes that took place throughout 2022. That interest rate was a 3.04. The 2022B series, the second tranche, rates had gone up quite a bit, but we were afraid they were going to go, go even higher. That rate was a 4.04. All things being, being considered here, you've already sold $280 million of this $355 million, well below the estimates that we put into place at the time you were doing the election, and it looks like we're going to be able to complete this, this sale well below those estimates as well. So that ought to be able to help us trans, what that should translate to is being able to deliver to the taxpayer an INS rate impact that does not exceed what they were told.
Do you know what that number would be? At what point of an interest rate now would affect those others to where we?
It would be, it would have to be quite significant.
Okay.
Because selling the first tranche, that $200 million first tranche at a 3% rate, we were estimating rates upwards of five on the whole thing. So we went ahead and knocked out over two-thirds of it practically at 3%. Another piece right at four. This last remaining piece, for us to have, you know, something to worry about there, we would probably have to see interest rates nearly double from here, so.
Yeah, and it's such a small piece.
Yeah, from an interest rate perspective, you've, you've done really well, and you're positioned to lock in the rest of it. And, and, let's just say something happens tomorrow, right? Because the world that we live in, the parameters order that you're authorizing us, authorizing tonight, doesn't require us to sell the bonds, right? If something happens in the bond market that is terribly unfavorable, we just tap the brakes and do it at a time that it's, that it becomes favorable again.
So say, God forbid, the bond market get any worse than it has been.
Right, right.
Here none, I'll entertain a motion. And the item is up on the screen for you to read. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, Rob wrote that.
Thank you, Rob.
He did write that, but for purpose of the motion, you say, approve the order as presented.
There you go.
I'll move that we approve the order as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ochoa, smart man.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vedania. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dusty. Good to see you. Okay, let's move on to number 12. Item 12, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the extension superintendent's contract, superintendent's compensation, and the 2023 performance goals. This is an item, I believe the performance goals are in your packet, but this is an item that the board is, has been in discussion, and we, so, oh, sorry, I'm trying to get to it. It, performance goals are on the very end. What most people don't, or maybe you do know, there was 871 pages in this packet, so, a little scrolling. Yeah, so I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we extend the superintendent's contract for a year, that we adjust the superintendent compensation with a 3% increase because of an increase that was not given in 2022, and that we adopt the 2023 performance goals as presented.
Okay. Ms. Izetti, thank you for the first. Mr. Vedania, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, oh, go ahead.
No.
Okay, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Guillory and Mr. Davis. So we have one, two, three, four, passes with a five to two. Dr. Kincanon, I really just wanted to say thank you for all your work. I've seen the trajectory of our district, the, I know there's always more work to do. I think you can talk to any teacher, any principal, anyone at administration, they know there's always more work to do, but really, you have done a great job of setting the tone. I think having the principals in here getting $27,000 for five years on top of their pay as, just, I think that's, these little things, they matter. They matter to our teachers, they matter to our families, they matter to our community, because our students deserve the best teachers. And so I just am so thankful for all the work that you've done. I know it is not easy. Nothing, education has gotten easier over the years. It has gotten more complex and a little bit harder, and so I just really want to take the time to thank you for, for your work. I know there's a lot of work to do, but I think we need to take pause and, and thank you for what you've done so far.
Madam President, I would just like to say, I'm looking forward to a time in the district where our kids' academics is the brightest sign of, shining star that we have. I really would like to see us really focusing on academic achievement for our students and put that first. I do like, I'm thankful for the work that's being done, we just really have to, we have to try some different strategies when it comes to our academic performance, when it comes to student safety and teacher retention. So I'm looking forward, hopefully to the future, that these things will do a quick turnaround, because that's what our students need.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, we will move on to announcements.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Kincanon. I brought my phone up here because I'm literally texting who's at the soccer playoff game. Our University High, Boys versus Magnolia West kicked off at 7:00 PM tonight. We have about 20 minutes left in the first half, and we're down 3-1. We just got our first goal, so I think we're going to get on a roll, I'm hopeful. Tomorrow night, we do have our Waco High Girls versus Magnolia at College Station High School at 6:00 PM. Then, right after, if you make the trip to College Station, you'll get to watch the Waco High Boys versus Montgomery Lake Creek at College, at the same high school at 8:00 PM. So it feels like a great Friday night to be in College Station, and I don't say that very much as a red leader. Something else to flag, April 6th is the last day to register to vote or to make a change of address effective for the March 6th, 2023 election. Hopefully, you'll see a lot of different organizations posting about it, including the McClanahan-Clowney elections. That same evening, Waco High School JROTC will be hosting their Military Ball at the Lee Lockwood Library at 6:00 PM. Fast forward a little bit to April 20th, as Dr. Kincanon mentioned, I really hope to see y'all as we honor our eighth grade superintendent scholars in this building at 6:00 PM. And then something else just to put on your radar, you should be getting information soon about some exciting staff celebrations. We'll be having a teacher incentive allotment prize patrol, so students, teachers, and campuses, a lot of fun there. Look for that information, as well as our lead from the Heart Award presentations. We'll be getting you more information about those, and they are a surprise, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And the first day of spring was this past week, and I think it's in the air, all of the excitement and great things that are happening. And so, support our, is our girls soccer? Boys and girls, Waco High, tomorrow? Okay, both tomorrow. Wonderful. Okay, well, thank you so much, and with that, we are adjourned.